Good evening. Before the regular council meeting starts, we normally go into committees, but tonight we have a special guest. I believe Bethany McKinney, our county council representative from Lucky District 7. I got it right that time, right?
That's right.
Yep. She's gonna make a presentation.
Thank you. Well, I'd like to ask Mr. Jim Frost to come up with me. So as I've mentioned, I live just down the road.
Cameras over there.
And so does Mr. Frost. And I am your district representative for New Franklin on Summit County Council. And it's my honor today to present a commendation to the one and only Jim Frost. So, and I don't always read the whole commendation, but I think you'll enjoy this. So just sit back as if you're sitting around the fireplace and please enjoy the story of Mr. Jim Frost. And you're not allowed to fall asleep, so.
You can leave.
Could you probably know all this? Whereas Jim Frost was born on February 2nd, 1934, Lakewood, Ohio, the midwife who delivered him was said to have made the remark, "That's one little groundhog who won't go back in his hole." And whereas in November 1948, Jim took the girl, who has later become his wife, to her first dance. It was a Sadie Hawkins Day dance at a junior high school in Lakewood, Ohio, where she asked him to be her date. He dutifully wore the corsage she made for him of fresh vegetables and danced gallantly, although I don't think he knew how to dance. He married Margaret, Margaret, in November of 1963. They raised four lively children, Shawn, Liz, Amy, and Wendy. Did I get that right?
Yeah.
In a big house in Rocky River, where the children were active in their church, sports, music, social groups, and made lots of noise. Over the years, there was a parade of pets, including a duck, Morgamzer, who fell out of the sky, named Alexander Graham Bill by the kids. Whereas Jim Frost, all true so far?
Yep.
Jim Frost taught at Camden Community College as a full professor of psychology and taught at various other schools prior to retirement. During his career, he helped initiate and run a study skills clinic and co-authored a book on study skills. He also initiated a drop-in center for those recovering from alcohol and drug addiction. And whereas roughly 30 years ago, Jim and Margaret made the brilliant decision to move to New Franklin. I'm out of that part. And we're delighted to get to know the people and places in the area. It's not unusual for Jim to pitch in and help with various community projects, including the Purple Martins and the Porridge Lakes Purple Martin Association. An avid birder from a very young age, Jim helped with feeding the returning birds in the early spring and helped prepare gourds for their arrival. He participates in the Buckeye Martin Fest, helping to pass out information on the natural world surrounding us. He also helped monitor special protected areas of the state parks. Whereas Jim took his grandsons fishing on the lakes, birding in the spring, and hiking the area trails. Pirate Day participation was a given, and children giggled at his impudent "Arrgh!" Can you give us one?
Arrgh!
He also played Santa Claus at schools, churches, and community gatherings and assisted with the construction of the disc golf course in the Porridge Lakes. For weeks in dry summers, he filled up huge containers with water, drove them over to the park, and gave the new plantings a helpful drenching. Jim also was a leader of the annual Celtic Pilting Festival, the Scottish American Society, an active Scottish group, and the Ohio Scottish Games, where he exercised his longtime interest in Celtic history, speaking at various events to interested parties. He taught classes and gave lectures to adult learning facilities along with his wife Margaret and worked in Celtic genealogy at museums, schools, Scottish games, and various festivals. And whereas Jim and Margaret worked the bodey booth for many years, volunteered at various local dinners and activities, for more than 10 years, they volunteered leading tours, participating in repairs, teaching and decorating. His children and their families have been active in many volunteer activities and still are. Many times, the whole family gathers at festivals, games, and contests. Jim has passed on a legacy of commitment, community service, to his children and grandchildren. In his 90 years... I'm gonna add something. And great-grandchildren. In his 90 years, he had dozens of descendants, experiences, and friendships to numerous accounts. Now, therefore, be it known and declared by this council of the County of Summit, State of Ohio, this council recognizes the 90th birthday of Jim Frost, celebrating his life and longevity, and salute his commitment to his family and community throughout the years. We urge all citizens to join in honoring Mr. Jim Frost in receiving this commendation in the honor of this milestone on the 7th day of February in the year 2024.
We're gonna ask you, wait for comments, because we got one more for you, and then we're gonna wanna hear from you. Is that okay?
Oh, sure.
Yeah. The city wanted to also recognize you with the proclamation. And I'm gonna read it here in a second, and you'll be happy. No, it's not as long, but this was... That was delightful. And as I told Mrs. Frost just a moment ago, you know, when you get a window into somebody into a life well-lived, it's a beautiful thing. And it strikes me that... How many years were you in education? 50?
Yeah.
Well, you think about all the lives that are touched as an educator. You know, the ripples that go out, you catch the red under water. Huh?
Special education.
Yeah, special ed too, and, boy, the alcoholics and the addicts and just the many lives that you have touched.
I touched a lot of mine.
It's not... And I was like, yeah, well, we wanna honor you for that. So now comes the council of the City of New Franklin and hereby makes the following declaration. Whereas New Franklin resident Dr. James Andrew Jim Frost celebrated his 90th birthday on February 2nd. And whereas Jim Frost enjoyed a distinguished academic career as a full professor at Hyrum and Caga Community College as well as providing instruction informally to area groups on Celtic history. A proud Scotsman, he, as am I. Did you ever toss a caper?
Yeah.
Did you ever toss a caper? You should see what you did a week ago. And whereas Jim Frost has been active in the community, assisting in the construction of the disc golf course at Porridge Lake State Park, the Martin of Bode installations and maintenance, and the Porridge Lakes Advisory Council events, including Pirate Days. And whereas Jim Frost has been blessed with 60 years of marriage to his loving wife Margaret and enjoys the love and admiration of his four children, grandchildren, and great-grandchildren, all of whom benefited from his faith and his guidance. Now, therefore, in consideration of the foregoing and in celebration of 90 years of life well-lived, the City of New Franklin presents this proclamation of recognition this 7th day of February 2024, signed by Mayor Paul Adamson and President of Council Jack K. Daniels. Once again, congratulations.
What's to say, actually? I didn't know it's known these things. So it's a treat to hear.
I didn't either.
So it's been an honor to be honored at this ceremony. And thank you very much for your words, your words.
It's our honor.
It's beyond me to say what's hard.
We appreciate you.
Thank you so much.
Get pictures.
Yeah. I'm gonna have... We'll hold up the commendations with you and get a couple of pictures. I'll just hold this here. We got somebody named Jack Daniels. Would you guys like to hold this one?
Yeah, sure.
I'll hold it, Jack Daniels.
I'll hold it, Jack Daniels. I heard that. All right.
Great, great.
Thanks a bunch.
Yeah.
Well, we also wanna honor you by saying that even though our council meetings are very interesting, we would fully understand if you wanted to adjourn and enjoy the rest of your birthday week here. But I'm here for what we do for the next hour or so. But you're also welcome to stay, of course.
I will say...
Hold up.
Well, I'll just say real quick that to have a successful community, it takes people like you who are gonna be involved and then pass that along to your children, because I know that's exactly how it works. That's exactly how it works. It means a lot. So thank you. But you guys are more than welcome to hang out. It's gonna be a little exciting, but not...
Thank you all. That's wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Just for the kids alone.
All right, so we'll start over again with good evening. And before the regular council meeting starts, we have our committee meetings. These are less formal than the actual meetings, so if anyone from the public would like to make any comments, you're welcome. I ask you to keep it brief. And after the committee meetings are over, we will start the regular meeting, where there will be two different times for the public to give your input. So tonight, the first piece of legislation is Mrs. Jones, Resolution 24R-08.
Thank you.
All the safety meeting at 6:13. And the resolution is a resolution authorizing and directing the fire chief to make grant application to the Ohio Bureau of Workers' Compensation, firefighter exposure to environmental elements grant FEEEG and declaring an emergency. And I'm thinking that the chief is here to speak with us, and that's... Am I right?
Yes, ma'am. It's an opportunity through the Bureau of Workers' Compensation that they're providing. And they would provide $15,000 of the $20,200 for four sets of structural firefighting gear. So it's done in-house. Doesn't require our grant writing service to do it. And we have applied in the past for different workers' compensation grants and been successful, so we're looking to do that again.
And I don't see any... Does anyone have any questions? Anybody opposed to...?
No, just real quick. This is providing $15,000 for the four sets. The total price is going to be $20,000.
$2,200.
Yeah. So out of pocket for us is about $5,000.
$5,200.
Which is very pricey for a set.
So that was really good. So no problem with waving the three?
Correct.
And I would like to close the community, the safety committee at 6:15.
All right, our next resolution goes to Mr. Cox, Finance.
Thank you. We will open Finance Committee at 6:15, starting with Resolution 24R-09. Mr. Cox.
This is a resolution granting wage increase for clerk to council and declare an emergency. I think as we have with any other compensation resolution, we'll ask for time on this.
Time is requested, time is granted.
Thank you. Our next resolution is 24R-10, a resolution authorizing New Franklin to enter into an agreement with Sun Life Financial for Life, Voluntary Life, and Voluntary Vision Insurance for the New Franklin Health Insurance Plan and declaring an emergency. And Sun Life is a company that we've used for many years. There is no price increase for 2024, and this is the, actually been the same price as at least 2021, if not longer.
Yeah.
For the same coverage.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
This is impressive.
Questions, comments, concerns? Ask away three? Thank you. We will close the Finance Committee meeting at 6... We'll say 17.
All right. Last, we have Mr. Schaefer and Community Development.
I'm gonna open up Community Development at 6:16, Resolution 24-R-11. The resolution authorizing New Franklin to enter into an agreement with American Muscle Docs and Fabrication for trust floating courtesy dock for the Tugger House Seawall Project and declaring an emergency. So I have several questions, and I know Mr. Wolf has some questions too. This is in conjunction with the docs that are already being put out there. Is this part of the 300-page grant that was given?
Yes, it is.
Okay. In this, well, some minor things here. This quote says there's three pages. I don't like receiving two.
Uh-oh.
Was the other one a cover sheet?
I wanted to say yes.
In addition to that, I see that, you know, these docs have a warranty on them. The flotation drums have a 15-year warranty on it, which seem to be a pretty good warranty to be. The doc itself, it has a one-year warranty on it. Do you know why it's only one year?
I cannot answer that for you. What I can tell you is that they were shopped pretty hard in terms of comparative pricing and comparative product. And so I'm going to guess that that's consistent with the industry. But I don't know... I can't tell you specifically why.
I'm gonna let Mr. Wolf ask a couple of questions before I take him.
Well, I just noticed that it says this quote states January 12th. It's good for 15 days. Do we not miss the...
Yeah, we have the assurance. Yeah, they're aware that it took us a little bit longer to get it in front of council.
And then there wasn't... I was out at the other side of the audience when... This is what Kevin told me. This is just a sort of a leader system to get from the docs?
Well, no, actually, this is gonna replace the existing doc.
Okay.
So the previous package was a separate... Were the additional docs?
Okay.
And when we looked at how the budget was going and what, you know, how much money we had left, it appears that we're confident we're gonna have enough left within the $300,000 to cover this one as well. So we wanted to kind of be sure of that before we introduced it.
Is that a wood doc, the one that's up there now?
Yes.
I think so. So this is a match.
Yeah.
Right.
Exactly.
Yeah, and I believe we noticed the three pages, but it begins with "Hi, Tim," and it's page two, and so I have a feeling it was a cover page, but I'm sure it is. You got the substance, I tell you.
Where that was if I felt it.
So that leads to some questions. I was under the impression this was the gangway going out to the new dax, because this one's six foot wide by 40 feet long. So this is just a single spur going out?
Yes.
Without fingers on it?
Right. And it'll be in the location where the current one is now?
Then the new ones will be a little further down?
Exactly.
Toward the state park?
Towards the state park.
And do you know if this is... This just came to me, this question. Is this platform capable of having any fingers put on it? Are you gonna expand it? Is that always the same kind of material?
I don't know the answer to that. I don't think there's any plans to do that, because I think the idea, the reason we pushed the other ones closer to state park was just for the ambiance and to keep that traffic away from the lakefront itself.
I remember that discussion.
Yeah.
And I believe this doc then will be used when wedding parties are coming to the wedding on their boats.
Or leaving the boat.
Right. Without having to have all those other docks around. You have to dedicate its space to pull up to...
Right, you know, and it goes beyond, I mean, certainly that, but personally, I don't even envision it just for that. You know, that doc has use during the day at times. People will pull up in a pontoon and et cetera and just wanna tie on and enjoy the grounds. So I think we'll see that type of traffic there as well.
So any type of party coming in?
Sure.
Just to reiterate, this is basically no cost to New Franklin.
Exactly.
But the price for this, just so everybody knows, is $21,823 plus an estimated shipping of $1,000. Now, the other thing that we don't see that was addressed in here is that, well, it's kind of addressed. When it gets shipped, it's our responsibility to have the labor and the equipment there to unload it and then to assemble it. Who does it?
We've had that same discussion with our site manager. And so I'm gonna tell you, my assumption right now is that that would be their responsibility.
Would be the Tugger House.
Yeah, right. Now, it's conceivable that we'll have some service department guys involved as well. So it'd probably be a joint project.
How much of that do you think it's gonna cost the city?
I do not... I apologize, I don't have a... I can't give you an estimate on that.
Are there any other questions? We're looking to wave the three or ask for time?
Stand up to you.
How long is the number good for? Well, we're past that.
30 minutes. And with also backwards and so on, we'd like to move it if we can. So it's gonna take a while to get this in and then install it. We'd like to have it ready for the season.
Yeah, this is an eight-to-10 week lead time, which would close out approximately May 15th if everything went right. That's 10 weeks approximately. And I'm not sure if they would have it set up by Memorial Day or not or if it came in at that time.
You're right. And then we'll see our progress too.
Yeah.
Do we know how much is left of that $300,000 at this point? Bob?
Well, we have. We've got pricing coming in on the lighting, which is the last piece, and we've got estimates on that. I'm gonna say $25,000 to $10,000?
Yeah, I wouldn't wanna say without looking at the numbers, because I thought the fire chief set up, and this hasn't been all added into that, but there was enough money remaining to handle that. And we've collected part of what we've done already, so.
This brings up a little bit of a different question. Somebody was asking questions about the line items and how the budget is laid out for the Tugger House. Is this a fund of its own, or is this under the New Franklin, whatever that...
This is the FPPC Castle of Projects Fund, which is a separate fund.
So it'll show... That fund will show expenses of $300,000. It will be offset by the income on the same line?
Yes. And also, in the reports that you get, it might not all be specifically on there, although it will have the information to show you, because basically, some of this was started before we established that fund. So when we get the money back and it's paid back to that fund where it came from. But...
Okay, so that fund will end up being essentially zero or close to zero?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. That is what I was curious, whether there would be a $300,000 expense listed even though we know that it was zero?
Yes.
So it would be zero. Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. Now, this does require a 75% deposit once we say okay. So if there's any questions or any reason to ask for time, we need to know now, because once we send out that deposit, we're locked in. Got some feedback?
I'm comfortable waving the three.
I am too.
So...
So last three. At that point, I will close Community Development at 6:25.
And I incorrectly said that was our last one, because I didn't want to forget about Mr. Almond and the Streets and Drainage Committee of Kansas Republic.
We saved the best for last. We'll open the Streets and Drainage Committee at 6:25 for Resolution 24R-12, a resolution authorizing New Franklin to enter into an agreement with OMH Advisors for engineering and bidding services for the 2024 New Franklin paving project and declaring an emergency. This is a nice piece we added. I would like to thank Brian Kepler for him not being here but for his judicious response to my questions about, you know, just helping me learn a little bit about the 2024 paving project we have here in Franklin. It is... This is just to get the groundwork running and everything like that. He did talk about how some of these areas that were put up in the OMH advisory, like the Swigger area, hasn't been paved in over 23 years, which I didn't know that. I wish I had time to go visit it myself, but, you know, just with work and then when I got the agenda, there wasn't enough time for me to check myself. But, you know, I trust Mr. Kepler. He did great work with that. Another cool thing is that he was talking about the reason why he chose these roads, even though some of them are really close to each other, is that some companies, he said, in his email to me, the rest of council as well, he said that too, was that it's about $5,000 to $10,000 to move these jobs around for companies, he said. And that's an expense that, you know, he's planned out. He's thought thoroughly through it, and he's proved, you know, he's proved and planned ahead for it as well. And the coolest thing is that, you know, we're paving. We're not chip and sailing. So we're getting away from chip and sailing. You know, I know a lot of people aren't very big fond, fan of that. Not very fond of it, but it's pretty good. Is there any other questions or comments? Comfortable waving three? We will close the Streets and Drainage Committee at 6:27.
All right. With those five first readings, do any of the other committees have any business they'd like to discuss? Hearing none, I will call to order the Wednesday, February 27th, meeting of the New Franklin City Council, and we'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
I, Franklin, to the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kelly, could you call the roll?
Mr. Cox?
Present.
Mr. Schaefer?
Here.
Mrs. Jones?
Present.
Mr. Daniels?
Here.
Mr. Powell?
Present.
Mr. Wolf?
Present.
Mr. Almond?
Present.
All right. I make a motion to approve the minutes from the last regularly scheduled meeting, January 17th, at 20:24.
7:00.
Kelly, call the roll.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Almond?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
All right, this is the time of the meeting where we open it up for public comment. Please keep your comments under four minutes and address council. There you go. Stand up. Please state your name and address if you can.
Good evening. Joe Duffner, Green Valley Drive. What is your street address? 1074. Thank you. We had an incident this weekend called the Sunshine Estate Sale. Yes, for a home at 10... For the contents of a home at 1059 Marine Valley Drive. These... This started Friday, the 2nd, at 10 o'clock, and supposedly was to end at 4:00. This went on Friday through Monday. People started lining up on our street at 5:00 a.m., bumper to bumper, both sides of the street, blocking mailboxes, impeding ingress, egress on our street, and blocking driveways. We got mail at 8:00 Friday night, because bailmen couldn't get through. No UPFs, no FedEx box trucks could get down our street. Police and fire couldn't get down if they had to, and this is an older neighborhood. The police were called several times. People just didn't care. People just didn't care. If they pulled up in your yard and turfed it, well, that's just your problem, not theirs. I spoke with the people running the Sunshine Estate Sale tonight, and they claimed that they have permission and permits from New Franklin to hold this event. Be that true or not, that's not what the problem is. This should have been shut down when they were parked on both sides of our street. This is a very narrow street, barely one lane. And they were on both sides of the street, you couldn't get out. So, I'm not suggesting that you have to issue or apply for a permit to have a yard sale, God forbid. But something like this was totally out of control. It should have been shut down by our officers until they got the traffic under control.
Sounds like it was more than just a yard, sounds like it was something that was advertised pretty expensive.
It was advertised on the internet. Rumor has it, and the people at Sunshine deny this, but rumor has it that Sunshine will also be auctioning the house off, which means we're gonna go through hell again, sorry. This, it, it's just unacceptable.
This was, the, the, the sale was Saturday, you said?
It started February second, it's still going on right now. People are still pulling up their trucks and loading their treasures.
Okay.
But supposedly, it ran Friday through Monday.
Okay. Well, I, you wanna talk at all?
Yeah, no, I had no idea, and I apologize.
No, it.
It didn't come to our, nobody brought a target tension.
No, and man, you know, one of the circus clowns that was from Sunshine tonight told me, oh no, we have permission and a permit from New Franklin.
This I can assure you without checking further, there's no permit issued from New Franklin. Uh, we don't even have such a thing.
Yeah, that's right.
I mean, we, we have special events permits, but that all comes across my desk, so that didn't exist.
This man just was telling me what he wanted me here to get rid of me. You can get rid of a voice, you can't get rid of a person. Numerous calls to their office went unanswered. Leave a message, we'll call you back. They never did.
Well, I'll check back with the police in terms of what their reaction was and how they.
Fire and EMS, that's the biggest thing.
Right.
You don't wanna.
We've got several people in wheelchairs, several handicapped folks in our neighborhood, stroke victims.
And I think prospectively this, through grace of God, you got through without something horrible happening, is not acceptable. Uh, and I'll, I'll, I'll check with the police and see what, how they, how they addressed it and what they have by way of reports. I, I think that this certainly invites us to consider some type of legislation perhaps relative to estate sales. Not necessarily garage sales, and I respect the fact that you're saying that as well. But, but an organized estate sale, well, it's just really a different animal.
It was, it was a plus three, y'all know the next one.
So I think it's worth looking at, and I'm not saying that to pacify.
I understand.
I think we gotta look and see what other county, what other cities are doing, and see if maybe we wanna enact something that you do have to come and get that permit.
Exactly.
Uh, and you, and because all of our special events permits require, uh, the, the, a plan, and then it goes to the police for them to take a look and make comments, it goes to fire for them to take a look and make comments before it gets to my desk. And so, you know, we can, I'm sure we can put some parameters maybe in the legislation that talks about the kind of things that would be appropriate or inappropriate for this kind of thing.
I had called Monday and talked to Barry, uh, and who just about lost his little mind when I told him what went on over the weekend. We can't get hold of anybody over the weekend, except to call the police department. Come and see the hell that these people are putting us through. You're blocking the mailboxes. Isn't that a federal offense? You're blocking the driveways? You know, when you've gotta pull your vehicle to the end of your driveway and block the rest of your driveway with your trash coats, why? They just get out and move it. Trash that's normally picked up on Friday, Friday morning was not picked up until late Tuesday afternoon.
Do you have any contact information for the Sunshine folks that?
Three three zero. You know I did some homework.
Yeah, I figured as much, so.
Four three four twenty-five oh nine. No address, but supposedly they are based in Fairlong.
Paul, can't we do a temporary parking restriction for areas by the order of the police chief? I know we'd do that in another area.
Yeah.
And then at that point, you know, that'd be, it'd require some coordination on Sunshine's part to come up with some sort of shuttling service, have people park at the state park and shuttle them down the back.
Right.
Or they could have rented space at Lala's. You know, there were many, many options, and they were just very curt with all the neighbors. It's not our problem, this is our job, this is what we're here to do, to sell the contents.
And probably the individuals you were talking to were just working there and they.
They were flunkies.
You know.
Yeah, and she, she burns up a great point, because we have many small, narrow streets, such as, as Green Valley. And, uh, as far as a, a temporary, no parking or things like, we already had that in place, when if you park on the street, you can't, you can't be blocking that half of the street. I mean, that's already part of our laws, uh, and police have the, the option of towing cars because of the safety issues that, that you mentioned. Uh, but, but is it, I think, I've seen that, I've seen it, uh, not, not this past weekend, but in other areas.
I wish I would change the pictures.
It's a nightmare for the neighbors, and just as you mentioned, you're not gonna get, uh, an emergency squad down there. You're, you know, it's just not gonna happen, you're not gonna find people. It'll take twenty minutes to get cars out of the way, and there's nowhere for those cars to go, because it's a dead-end street, especially with that street, it's a dead-end street.
We counted over a hundred cars, I don't know if you have the length of our street in your little black box or not, but we counted over a hundred cars that started, not only were they parked on the east side of Manchester Road facing north. So they're up Manchester Road, they're all the way down Green Valley, through the cul-de-sac of the other side of Green Valley, and stopped before they got to the former Dr. Stone's office up there.
I think what, I, when I think about legislation and some basic parameters in a, an application, an event application process, uh, we're gonna find, there, there's some streets that just don't lend themselves to it.
Right.
It's not a matter of, okay, if you do these things, you can do it here. It very well could be, and that, you can't do that here.
Right.
Okay? I mean, there are other ways of, of, you know, of addressing estate assets. Uh, they can be sold collectively, they don't have to be sold, you know, so there's, you don't want hampstead and move to another location, but, uh, you know, I, I think, because we all know there's, there are some streets that arguably could accommodate something like this. And there's at least as many streets, if not more, that could not accommodate this.
But they were even parking on Swidart, and hordes of people, I mean, we were just sending Paul like, look.
I'm sure.
They're coming through the backyards.
Yeah, it's interesting.
Well, it sounds like, Paul, they did not even apply for a permit.
No, we knew nothing about it.
So that's what I'm saying, that's what's kinda lying.
It's the first time here. Yeah, I'm wondering if this could.
I understand, but did they show it to you?
No.
Oh, no, I asked him, I said, you're lying to me. I said, I just left New Franklin, I said, they don't know anything about you people. Oh, no, we have a permit back at the office, I said, no, you don't, you're lying to me, and I'm going to the council meeting tonight, and I'm nailing you people. I'm not playing.
So to touch on Mr. Cotts's point about, you know, one side of the road, and then opening it up and parking the other side, I, I don't even think that's fair, because now you're essentially pushing all the traffic to one side and creating property.
I, I, no, I'm sorry, I, I misspoke, I, I wasn't suggesting that, I, I was just saying, if, if you're parked on a street, and you're parked basically in the street, and you're blocking the flow of traffic for that side of the street, then you're illegally parked, no matter which side of the street you're on.
But even blocking the flow of traffic, now that you're pushing them further into their yards.
Well, no, no, yes, they, that would be a negative, but, but what I'm saying, if a car has to go around you and get, and go onto the other side of the street to pass a parked car, that parked car is illegally.
It's a violation.
Yeah, it's a violation.
So, he's saying the same thing you are.
But yeah, my, my concern is that we're not gonna do something that pushes them even further into their yards, which creates stuck cars, more, more lawn damage, stuff like that.
We've already got rest, believe me.
Okay, well, we appreciate your comment, very much so, and the detail that you brought, which means a lot, um, and I can assure you.
Try and keep the temperature under control. I have a question for all of you, though.
Alright.
Is it within the realm of our police department to shut down or suspend an event like this until traffic can be put under control?
We'd have to check with our law director.
Yeah, it would be, that would be.
Because I, you know, the fact that we didn't get mail until eight o'clock, eight o'clock Friday night, because the mail van couldn't get through, now that's just unacceptable.
I think something that probably could have been done, and I think maybe the, maybe the chief should be talked to, is that maybe, maybe a call to administration might have been in order to, to, to maybe get the law director involved. Uh, there might be some improvement here, there might be some room for improvement, I will say that.
Thank you for your time.
Yep, thank you, thank you for all your detail, that, that means a lot that you mean, uh, knowing what you were talking about.
They're still there at midnight last night picking stuff up.
And you mentioned you heard they may be selling a house, do you know if that would happen?
The talking head that I spoke to said, no, we are not in charge of auctioning off the house.
Okay.
So, but somebody else.
But the chatter through the neighborhood all weekend was with the treasure hunters, well, we'll be back when they auction off the house.
So I, I guess I would ask if you do hear of when that is gonna happen.
Oh, you know I've been calling.
And I jumped on Mary and Mary.
I got your number.
Yeah, and we can give you some of our numbers too, so.
Fabulous.
Alright, thank you very much.
Stack business cards, pass them this way.
Thank you very much, thank you. Anybody else have any comments? No, hearing none. Uh, we'll move on to the first reading, Resolution number twenty-four R zero eight, Kelly?
A resolution authorizing and directing the fire chief to make grant application to the Ohio Bureau of Workers' Compensation, fire tighter exposure to environmental elements grant FEEEG, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Kelly. This, Chief Leslie asked us to, um, pass this resolution so that he can apply for a grant that will cover four sets of this equipment for the fire department, and at the cost of two, twenty thousand one hundred and ninety-one dollars. And our portion of that will be fifty-two hundred dollars. And I'd like to make a resolution to pass, I'd like to make a motion to pass Resolution twenty-four R zero eight.
First, second, three.
Oh, I'd like to make a motion to raise the three for Resolution twenty-four R zero eight.
Second.
Now, first, the second.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Woep?
Yes.
Mr. Almond?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to pass Resolution number twenty-four R zero eight.
Second. Kelly?
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Woep?
Yes.
Mr. Almond?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Motion passed. Uh, next on to Resolution twenty-four R oh nine, Kelly?
A resolution granting wage increases for the clerk of counsel and declaring an emergency.
This resolution was assigned to the Finance Committee, and I'd like to request time.
Time is requested, time's granted. Uh, Resolution twenty-four R ten, Kelly?
A resolution authorizing New Franklin to enter into an agreement on Sunlight Financial for life, voluntary life, and voluntary vision insurance for New Franklin's health insurance plan, and declaring an emergency.
This resolution is assigned to the Finance Committee, we move to waive the three readings on twenty-four R ten.
Second.
Now, first, the second, Kelly?
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Woep?
Yes.
Mr. Almond?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
We move to adopt Resolution twenty-four R ten.
Second.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Woep?
Yes.
Mr. Almond?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Motion passes. Uh, next we have Resolution twenty-four R twelve.
Eleven?
Eleven.
Oh, sorry. Yep, um, I had the supplemental in front of me, and yes, twenty-four R eleven, go ahead.
A resolution authorizing New Franklin to enter into an agreement with American Muscle Docs and fabrication for a truck loading courtesy dock for the Tudor House Seawall Project, and declaring an emergency.
Uh, this was put forth to the Committee of Development Committee, are we gonna, uh, have a motion to waive the three?
Second.
Mr. Woep?
Yes.
Mr. Almond?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Like to make a motion to adopt, uh,
Resolution.
To adopt Resolution twenty-four R dash eleven.
Second.
Mr. Woep?
Yes.
Mr. Almond?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Motion passes. Now we go on to Resolution twenty-four R twelve, the best for last.
A resolution authorizing New Franklin to enter into an agreement with OMH Advisors for engineering and bidding services for the two thousand twenty-four New Franklin paving project, and declaring an emergency.
This resolution was assigned to the Streets and Drainage Committee, and I'd like to make a motion to waive the three.
Second.
Mr. Almond?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Woep?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution twenty-four R twelve.
Second.
Mr. Almond?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Woep?
Yes.
Alright, motion passes. Uh, there are no second or third readings, no pending legislation, which leads us to draw the plea. The best part, the merits.
Okay, let's see, we'll start with, uh, I wouldn't say bad news, but just news. Uh, we're, we're, we're trying to secure the funding for the first phases of our sewer project for Stay Round Ninety-three. Um, we have made application in a variety of places, and one of those places is the state capital budget, which is having a unique year in the sense that it's not just the basic, uh, whatever funds they would normally have for this budget, but it's also been supplemented by, uh, I think maybe the ARPA funds, uh, to the tune of about seven hundred million dollars. And that seven hundred million dollars has generally been allocated, three hundred and fifty million for the House to allocate, three hundred and fifty million for the Senate to allocate. Uh, so we've made presentations, we went down to the Greater Akron Chamber. The Greater Akron Chamber selected only a few proposals to suggest, uh, to, uh, to sponsor, I guess, and advocate for. Ours was one. Uh, we have, um, I believe the formal announcements are out, it's, the press has hit this, uh, that the, uh, from the House standpoint, that they elected to not fund any submersible, uh, projects, anything, any in the ground, they wanted capital projects. And I guess traditionally, the capital budget does not fund those types of projects, the sewer and the water infrastructure. So at least to this point, initially, the take from the House is that, that they chose not to fund this particular project. Um, my understanding is that that is still in somewhat of a state of flux, uh, and, uh, things are, um, interesting in Columbus. I was gonna say disarray, but that's probably not fair. Uh, so, so there's still work there, we're still doing some lobbying there, there's still, you know, some possibilities there. The other side of the coin is the Senate side. Uh, and it probably, I wanna say that, by the way, Representative Rumer worked really hard for us on the House side, even though we are at present without a representative. And I'm sure that doesn't help, but we were told that there were four projects similar to ours around the state that involved, uh, infrastructure, sewer, and water, and they didn't fund any of those four for that same reason. So I don't know if they particularly picked on us or just left us out because we don't have a rep. But Representative Rumer really, I think, called and spoke directly, and he felt bad about it, but did what he could to advocate for us. On the Senate side of things, Senator Rotner, and we've met with her several times, she has told us that she's supporting this, uh, this application. Uh, that is not gonna happen until later in the year, uh, it'll be April at least, by the time the Senate gets around to it. And then all of the, collectively, this capital budget will have to be presented and passed. Whether there be some horse trading back and forth, we don't know. Uh, we did, uh, Brian Durrell from Crete, who's working with us as a, uh, as a lobbyist, um, traded some emails with me today, and he's had, one of those was a conversation he had with, uh, with the Senate side, um, that confirmed that, uh, at least at present, there was no, uh, there was no indication from the Senate side that submersible, that submersible products wouldn't be, would be excluded. So I think we're very much in the running still, uh, and I just wanna keep you up to speed. Uh, and so that's the current state of affairs as a release to that. Um, what, we've already made application with the Ohio Department of Development for the Ohio Builds Fund, um, for five million dollars there as well, so, and the, and the county is a partner with us on that. Uh, so that one is working its way down the tracks as well. Uh, okay, let's see, on the, um, good news side, the, uh, AMAT's resurfacing program accepted applications for paving projects, and they got quite a few. Let's see, the list was, there were forty-one of them from around the, uh, not just Summit County, but it goes into Wayne and Portage County as well. Uh, and so of those forty-one, only the, uh, they only selected twenty for funding, and ours was one of them. Um, and this is for paving for South Turkeyfoot Road. Um, Summit County did South Turkeyfoot, that's the one that runs from the clock tower to the golf course. Uh, I've only lived here my entire life. Uh, I've only lived here my entire life.
And it's still.
And I still stumble over these Turkeyfoot, Turkeyfoot Lake, whatever. So, they did the portion from the clock tower to the, to the township line. Uh, this will do the portion from, from our city line to six nineteen. Um, it's scheduled out for twenty, well, it's scheduled right now for twenty twenty-seven, but once these things get funded, they move forward. Um, and, uh, it, it may be, um, that we want to end at twenty twenty-five anyway before, to do this. Uh, but, uh, the good news is, uh, it is a, um, let's see, if I got the notes on this. Uh, it's about a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar project. The grant is for six hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. So, uh, there's good news.
I, I, I'm confused, though, to location. You said, um, South Turkeyfoot?
Uh, yes.
And that, that would run from six nineteen north to Coventry?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Next to the upper deck and going up that way, not by Lakeside Park.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
And are they saying that, that the Coventry part's gonna be done at the same time?
It's already done.
Oh, that's already done? It's just our part, isn't it?
Yeah, okay. Yeah, so, uh, so there's, uh, six hundred and thirty-three thousand three hundred and ninety-one dollars. Uh, so there's good news. Uh, we, uh, submitted a grant through the Service Department, and, uh, our new administrative assistant, Courtney Test, is doing a really nice job. Uh, and, uh, I believe they used Gatchel on this as well?
Yes.
Okay, so they, they engaged Gatchel as well. Uh, this is the, uh, Ohio EPA, uh, chloride reduction, uh, grant. And what we have asked for, uh, is a total of a hundred and two thousand dollars in equipment. Um, a compact track loader, a hopper, and then aprons for the salt buildings to improve the storage areas. Um, that is a, uh, uh, there's no match to that grant. Uh, and, uh, it didn't, uh, some of these grants require a resolution, this one didn't, uh, and probably in large part because there's no match. So, we're either gonna get it or we aren't. Uh, but I wanted to keep you advised, and we're chasing that money there as well. Uh, let's see, I wanted to commend the, uh, we posted something, you may have seen it, but the, uh, our police department, um, has, uh, was, uh, Governor DeWine announced that, uh, uh, law enforcement, uh, the various communities who had achieved, uh, certification in a variety of areas of law enforcement, there's five groups altogether. Um, use of force and hiring, community engagement, body worn cameras, that's a separate group. Group three is bias-free policing and employee misconduct. Group four is, uh, vehicle pursuits. Group five is mass protests and agency wellness. Uh, and what's required is that the officers, and the department has to provide a, uh, a fair amount of materials, uh, that report, police reports on these areas, uh, for review, uh, in Columbus. And eventually, if you've satisfied all the criteria, you get certified in, in each one of these separate groups. Um, New Franklin is now certified in all five. And out of a hu- out of eight hundred and thirty-one various police agencies in the state of Ohio, uh, there's only a hundred and sixty-three that are certified in all five. Uh, so this is rare air for the police department, never been there. Uh, it's a really nice thing, it's a federal account, but it also, uh, is helpful in applying for grants. So that when they apply for their grants, the fact that they're able to show that they're certified in all five areas, a lot of these points are, uh, grants are point oriented, uh, and you get additional points for that kind of thing. So now we're eligible for anything and everything that's out there as far as grants are concerned. So, um, that's all, that's a separate initiative on the Police Department, Chief Bickett, uh, Captain Criner. Uh, and he mentioned that Sergeant Heimann has been allowed to work on this as well. So, uh, I wanted to bring that to your attention.
If, if I may real quick, I, I think that's just fantastic.
I think too.
We're, we're a small police force, and, uh, for, for all the officers to be involved and take the time for whatever training's involved, for, uh, for our police department to provide the material, uh, we're, we're not just hanging out, uh, you know, so we're, we're spending money on our police department. And we hear it all the time from our citizens that what a great job they do, the professionalism they show constantly, no matter what the situation is. And, you know, I, I think we're just very lucky, you mentioned there's eight hundred police departments in the state of Ohio, and only a hundred and sixty or so of them have received this. Uh, and, you know, for New Franklin to be one of them, I think that's fantastic, and, like I said, hats off to, to everybody on the force, and, uh, and hats off to taxpayers for allowing us to fund that department.
Yes, for supplementing, mhm, I agree.
Yeah, well, we're on police, you don't, I mean, you don't, I hate to emphasize sad news, and certainly a murder is really sad news, but you're aware that, uh, there was a, a retrial of a case that, uh, that occurred here several years ago. Uh, and, uh, it got reversed on interesting grounds. Uh, during the COVID area, a witness was allowed to testify remotely, and, uh, that wasn't acceptable. So, it, you know, so they, the chief, the guilty verdicts had to try it again, which is always very difficult, uh, and the results were the same. And, and I mention that because, uh, the victim's family was quoted in the news media as being so appreciative of the New Franklin Police Department, and specifically Detective Mike Kitchens, for never giving up on the case, uh, and, uh, and seeing it through. So, once again, uh, just a high level of respect, I say, in Summit County for, for our New Franklin police. It's good stuff.
Very good.
All right, uh, okay, now we need a volunteer, well, we need two volunteers. Um, the, uh, there is a board that council, there's usually a lot of competition for who gets to sit on this board. Uh, Judy has, has spent a lot of time on this board, devoted a lot of hours to the Volunteer Firefighter Dependency Fund Board. Uh, and this board meets when a volunteer firefighter has some calamity that perhaps would need compensated for. We're not exactly sure, because I don't think they've ever met. Uh, but we are required to have two, uh, council members as board members. Uh, and so I need, uh, first of all, I need to ask if Mrs. Jones, you're willing to serve again?
I would love to.
Uh, and, and this is a good one, if you like, boards where you don't have to do anything, uh, so, um, do I have a volunteer?
I can do nothing.
All right, very. All right, all right, perfect.
I, I, I'd make a motion that it pays twice as much this year as it paid last year.
And you.
Triple that.
Yeah, because we haven't had a raise in years.
All right. Okay, so I guess I'll ask for a motion to appoint Judy Jones and Barry Schaefer to the Volunteer Firefighter Dependency Fund Board.
So, we have a second?
Second.
Kelly, pull the rope.
Mr. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Woop?
Yes.
Mr. Amon?
Yes.
Uh, okay, now, let's see, just two more things. Um, the, uh, the Grill Road Bridge, uh, this thing is, I won't say it's taken on life of its own. It's about a four hundred thousand dollar project, we got three hundred thousand dollars from ODOT from the, uh, municipal bridge fund, so that's good news. Um, because of the state or the federal money and, and where the location is, uh, uh, we were required to do an environmental study. Uh, we retained, uh, G P D to do that. As part of this environmental study, uh, they are required to send out notice to area property owners and stakeholders. There's sent ten, ten property owners in the area that are gonna get letters from us. And, uh, we have to post a press release, which will be on our website tomorrow. I'm just really, uh, making you aware. Uh, there was some issue about the easements on this thing, because Summit County put this in who knows how long ago. Uh, and there are property owners, of course, that are but on either side. There was a question of whether there were easements, uh, and that, uh, up until, uh, mid-afternoon, nobody knew for sure. And it looked like we possibly were gonna have to get into, uh, right-of-way acquisition. Uh, and the good news came in about this, uh, mid-afternoon, that they found the easements. So, we don't have to worry about that. So, uh, but I wanted you to know that this is going out to about ten property owners, and, uh, it's gonna be a good thing, uh, when we get it in, we're hoping to get it, uh, get it in before the end of twenty twenty-four. Um, it's, and there will be some interruption with traffic when it's being installed. Uh, they're estimating maybe a detour of about ninety days or so, so. All right, and that's that, and, uh, lastly, the Charter Review, um, Committee will have their organizational meeting next Tuesday at six P M. That's a public meeting, it'll be right here. Um, one of our dutiful members is present, uh, Rosie, she, God bless her, she just keeps raising her hand. She's willing to serve, so we're so happy that she's gonna join us there. Uh, it is, it, it's just what it says, it's an organizational meeting, we'll talk a little bit about what the structure is. They'll, they'll appoint a chairperson and the secretary, set up the meeting schedule, uh, and then, um, proceed from there. Um, from, um, council's perspective, while we're talking about it, and we're talking about, you know, we've mentioned it a few times, um, that probably somewhat sooner rather than later, we'll look for some recommendations to, uh, that commission, uh, that review, uh, commission for, at least what council thinks might be appropriate or might want to suggest for changes to the charter. I know we've got a couple areas in there, um, about the rule changes for, uh, that relates for special meetings, that you don't necessarily want somebody to have to come and hand it to you, but that's what's required right now, so that would require a, a change of the, an amendment of the charter. And then the other major one, of course, is the primaries. Um, and, uh, um, do, we presently have a September primary? We are having extended discussions with the Board of Elections over the special election on the, uh, on the local option, um, and the, uh, and the cost of that, and who should bear the cost of that. So, we're in those discussions right now, but that occurred because we have a September primary. Um, so, if we needed one more reason to not have a September primary, that would be one. So, I think, and you guys, you folks may have already discussed this, but I think collectively, you can continue to discuss it and see which, which direction you, uh, you wanna suggest, uh, whether it's to, to go to the May primary and, and leave the charter the way it is, which essentially says if there's, uh, more than four people for mayor and for any individual seat, more than eight for the three council at large, would require a primary, or you do a way of primaries altogether. Um, so, keep thinking about that, and I'm gonna guess that this, uh, Charter Review Commission will probably, um, it'll probably have their, their next meeting in, I'm sure, in, sometime in early or mid-March. And maybe that would be the appropriate time to start at least having that discussion. So, the more the merrier, come on out Tuesday at six o'clock, and that's all I got.
We have had, uh, I, I have a few comments on what you had, I'm gonna go in reverse order. So, the Charter Review Saturday, when we had our, uh, what we call a workshop, um, we actually had quite a few, uh, discussions about some other items there. So, I think, I think we are gonna have some nice things to, to present. And I don't, I don't think it's a bad idea, if I'm gonna say this now, just in case somebody in the public has a concern about it, uh, I think the general consensus is that we don't need a primary. Uh, the, the general thought is to just get rid of the primary process. And if eighteen people wanna run for council, well, then eighteen people will be on the ballot. They'll probably charge us for that, because they'll have to have another piece of paper. Uh, but that's, that's a general thought there. Uh, on the Volunteer Fire Discrepancy Board, uh, do we have any volunteer firemen? I thought, I thought that was pretty well, we didn't have any anymore.
We don't have volunteer, uh, firemen, but, um, any of the part-time fallen or this jurisdiction.
They do, okay, got you. Um, I wanted to talk a little bit about the State House, and that is the Strategic Capital Fund. So, there's a normal capital fund, which as I'm being told is usually two to three hundred million dollars. This year, there's seven hundred million dollars in addition to that, so it is a very significant amount of money. I personally don't think the issue is dead. Um, I spoke to, I was in Columbus today and spoke to Representative Romer, who is not even our representative, uh, but has done an extensive amount of work down there, uh, down here. Uh, his district, by the way, he got the zero dollars.
Wow.
Uh, our district, which is thirty-two, which now encompasses Green, Coventry, uh, New Franklin, um, did get a couple million dollars for the airport, that airport tarmac, uh, I think it was two and a half million dollars. So, um, you know, my hat's off to a fellow that's, that's working hard. He is a tireless, tireless legislator, legislator, um, doing work that's not even in his district. Um, so, I, I don't think that, I don't think it's over for that, um, I will say. Anybody else have anything? Um, finance report, Sue, do you have anything?
Um, just that we have already, you know, as soon as we take, take a deep breath from, from all the, uh, end of January things that we have to get done, and, you know, N S W twos, of course, then the GAAP people show up, and that's for, uh, for our accounting, our financial conversion to the, to be, uh, in, in line with GAAP. Um, they come and we start getting three or four-page lists of all the things that they have to do to get our financial report together. So, we've already started that. In fact, before I came here, I was finishing uploading to their share, shareholder, um, like, um, I don't know, about ten files for them to get started on. So, that's gonna be the big push, because we also, we're gonna have to have another single audit this year because, um, we, we spent federal money in excess of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, that requires a single audit, which they do at the same time as the regular audit, but it requires extra paperwork and extra work by our, um, by Julian and group, who are our, uh, GAAP conversion experts. So, we're busy doing that, and I know the auditors are gonna call me in half a breath and wanna get started as well. So, that's just kind of stuff that goes on, on top of our regular day-to-day, month-to-month openings, closings, and, uh, you know, paying bills and taking in money.
Thank you. Uh, anybody have anything for old business?
Yeah, I'd like to touch on the workshop again, I thought we had, it ended up, we had a great meeting, it lasted almost four hours. We had some residents show up, uh, got a lot of good discussion amongst us. Uh, we covered a lot of topics, a lot of stuff, we had the cleanup, we talked about the charter and stuff. We had some ideas we liked to, uh, to add to the, to the Charter Review Board to, to look at. Uh, what is the deadline to have that stuff to them?
They have to have their report, uh, by June, I believe it's June the sixth.
June sixth, okay. And then, so let's say we submit something to the Charter Review Board, and they decide it's not something they wanna proceed with, we can do that through a resolution on council. Is that the same deadline, or when does it have to be turned into the Board of Elections?
Uh, I'm sorry?
It would be the same.
It would be the same deadline, I think that's what they, yeah, that's why they have that date.
Okay, so they'll turn that into the Board of Elections on June sixth, so when will the committee actually know what they're wanting to support and what they're not wanting to? And the reason I'm asking is I'm trying to work backwards.
Right.
For a, a date that we can have, so we know whether they're gonna support it or not, and then we can get, you know, if we need to, a resolution written on our end and work with, uh, for how that legislation would look and so on.
Right, I, I, um, I don't have, I got the file in the other room. I don't recall that they went to the deadline in years previous. Uh, I, I think that, uh, generally, the, the suggested amendments were presented to them, uh, I would think by the April meeting, I would think that they'd be in a position to say what they wanna recommend, but they don't. Um, you know, and because again, it's, I, I don't think there's that much volume, and it's, um, uh, it's pretty straightforward stuff. Uh, so, uh...
The earlier the better.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. So, I, it, it's hard for me, you know, I mean, I, well, I can't speak for that group, they're an independent group. But, as a general rule, in the past, they've, you know, I think they've given deference to what, uh, you know, what council has suggested. But in the event that council suggested something, and, and the charter, that, that group wanted to do something different, you're right, charter has the right to, to present their own, by way of a, a resolution.
So, on that, you guys want to look at having another workshop on, uh, Saturday towards the end of March sometime?
Yes.
Or fourth Saturday?
What we're saying is that they have discretion, but they, they normally will get it to us, say, within months' notice?
No, I don't think that was.
And so.
As I understand, they have to have it, uh, to us by June sixth.
Here, I apologize, here's what, here's, and it's in the charter. Um, on or before June twelfth, they recommend to council, uh, any amendments. Uh, and then, uh, council, uh, has to publish those recommendations, uh, for, uh, two consecutive weeks, and, uh, they also have to hold a public hearing within one week after the second publication. So, we're in a situation where the twelfth is when they have to have them, and then there's, uh, two weeks of publication, and then a, a, a public meeting after that, which will be sometime at the end of June, early part of July. I will check and let you guys know tomorrow, deadline is from the Board of Elections in terms of how soon they have to have this.
The deadlines there may be problematic, because we've got, you know, if it's two weeks, we advertise it for two weeks. We, we've got one meeting each month in June and July, and depending on how we do that, that may not.
Oh, you have a special there?
Yeah, we might have to have a special meeting.
Yeah, just have a.
That should not be a problem.
Right.
Yeah, I, it may not be a bad idea to have a special meeting for it anyway.
That's, that's.
I mean, we'll see how the recommendations go, but I, I think we should have a workshop. The, the other thing on this subject, uh, that we talked about on Saturday, and we've talked about this extensively, uh, besides that, is the concept of having a member of council be involved in all of these things, attend these meetings, essentially attending as a member of the public, um, but, but asking a member of council to make sure that they attend, uh, zoning meetings, parks meetings, um, all of them, so that we make sure we're represented there. Not necessarily that we wanna go in there and swing our weight around, but when things are being talked about, it might not be a bad idea for the board to look at the council member and say, "Does that seem like something council might have an appetite for or not?" Um, you know, so I think, I think it'd be. You know, so I think, I think it'd be nice to, to put something a little more structured together, requiring somebody to be there. And that's, that's on us to decide whether we want to do it per committee. You know, of course, what if one committee has four boards that they should meet on, and other committees don't have any? So, I don't, I don't know how we'll work that out, but just think it'd be good for us to have, have a person that, especially at the Charter Review.
Absolutely. And I think the general, the general concept's a good idea. What floats in my mind is, when we're talking about planning, zoning, and BZA, that that council liaison, for lack of a better term,
That's a perfect word.
probably need to be an observer and not a participant. Because potentially then you could end up
Correct.
dealing with this, the issue that, you know, that that board's dealing with initially.
But, but that word could refer to that council member should they decide, so they're not there to make comment, they're there essentially to listen, and if the board wants to refer to them, they're so.
Yeah.
One of the other things I had for old business was, we're gonna revive the Tucker Truck again this year. Police and fire seem to be completely on board. If we get out here early afternoon, I guess I'm gonna head over to talk with the scouts, if not, I'll catch up to another time. But it's, it's gonna be another, another event this year. So, we're looking forward to that. And then Citizen of the Month, I think we have 30 days from the time we enacted that, that we can't do anything correct, because we have emergency legislation on it.
Right.
So, I'll have something together and to you guys mid-month, and we'll shoot for first meeting of March to have a first.
Perfect.
Great. As you said, the scouts came in, I guess it was just last Wednesday. So, the troop came in and they had, they had a government badge to achieve, and we spent an hour or so with them, talking about government. They had some great questions. A delightful group, and the, their leaders, we commended them, of course, for their willingness and their participation leading these young men. And our Girl Scouts are, I mean, we're really blessed, we've got some good groups out here. We got another Eagle Scout coming. The young man who did the, Ethan Stoll, who did the dog up at Grill, has now achieved Eagle status. So, I've got a combination sitting on my desk that we'll be presenting on March 30th at Amano Talk for you. So, we continue to rank out the Eagle Scouts here in New Franklin.
Just like Mr. Frost, when you've got good leaders in those organizations, and you've got people, people in the community that want to be involved, that's when you end up with good scouts. That's, that's a perfect example of it. Okay, that was all old business?
I have a couple.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Last year, council approved a resolution to install AED equipment in our parks. Those AEDs are in, they're not installed yet, but they're in, they've been programmed, they're ready to be installed. And Chief Leslie thinks that they should be in by May 1st. Installed right by May 1st, so by the beginning of the spring pickleball season and the other activities. Speaking of community involvement and, and the boards, I attended a planning and zoning commission meeting, I think, I don't know, one of them. And we had a pretty cool crowd showing the community involvement. But one of the issues we had was, and it's always an issue, it seems like, is being able to hear people when they're talking. And Robert did a good job of getting a microphone around and things like that. And I'm hoping, Mr. Powell, you were working on something last year, I hope you have some good news for us on.
I'll ping him again and see if I can get some feedback.
Okay. Yeah, I just think as we're getting more people coming, hi, everybody. But through a lot of these meetings, we're getting a lot of people coming, and they're interested, they want to know what's going on. And it's difficult when you're sitting out there, and people are facing this way to, you know, to give their, their information. It's, it's hard to hear, it's hard to hear what they're saying. And of course, nobody can see what they're talking about, because the board has all paperwork, but there's nothing up that people can see what they're referring to, and kind of get an idea of what the concept or, you know, how you can imagine it, especially when there's, looking to do some zoning changes or, or things like that. So, so hopefully we'll be able to move on something in the near future. And I appreciate your work on that. That's all I have.
Anything else for old business? Anybody have any new business?
The Director of Team Up Here that practices, they are going to have a mammogram bus in the area. Two dates coming this summer. They're gonna have it up at the Cobo Banker Building on 619. If I get you that information, could we post it up on the website?
Absolutely. Excellent.
What was it, Ethan?
I don't, my wife is going to, I left the house without getting all the information. So, I will get you a flyer and get it posted up.
Yeah, that'd be good. Anything else for new business? One of the other things that got talked about, talking about boards and liaisons on Saturday, was the idea of having a liaison go out to each of the school districts, the four school districts that are in New Franklin. I'm gonna reach out, get the contact information for each school board president, so that we can figure out when their meetings are, see if they would be willing to send a liaison to our meetings. You know, get, get a little dialogue going back and forth between the, the school districts. I think it'd be, it'd be a healthy, healthy thing for us to do. Any other public questions and answers on issues that have been raised so far tonight? Nope, hearing none. We do have an executive session this evening to discuss personnel.
Compensation of public employees.
Public employees or public officials, yeah. And no decisions will be made during this executive session.
You have to do a specific.
Say again?
You have to do a specific motion to adjourn to executive session with a vote.
Before I do that, I was asked to explain executive session. If you do the Sunshine Law Training, which Sunshine Law is kind of what it sounds like, we're not allowed to do anything in private. So, we, if more than three of us, or a quorum, meet somewhere, we're not allowed to talk about any official business. So, what executive session does is gives us an opportunity to talk about matters in private, but we can't make any firm decisions. And that, and what happens in that executive session has to stay private amongst us council members. So, having.
Yeah, now we just have, there's, there's a specific list of topics that, that are appropriate for, for executive session. They just can't go in on anything, and that's why.
Correct.
It's required.
Yeah, we get in there, we have to, we have to keep to the specific topic. So, having said that, I make a motion that we go into executive session for discussion of compensation of public employees.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Amen?
Yes.
Now, so the next council meeting?
Next council meeting is the 21st? February 21st, 6:00 PM, in Council Chamber.
Don't forget to remember your down.
Yeah, that's right.